Good evening. As it is 7 o'clock, we are going to start this public hearing. Thank you all for taking the time to attend. We're looking forward to hearing from our board's community members in a calm and respectful manner. I'm going to address a couple of housekeeping items before we get started here. Only speakers signed up to speak will be recognized to speak. I will recognize each speaker and let you know when it's your turn. In person attendees can remove their masks like so to speak. Each speaker will have up to five minutes of time to speak, and a countdown clock will be provided. On Zoom, I will let you know when the time begins and I will tell you when you have a minute left. No yielding, extra time to others. I will mute. I will mute Zoom if needed, if we go over five minutes. This is a time of listening by the board. The board will take all of your comments into consideration to discuss at the board meeting on Monday, October 26. Due to this meeting happening both in person and virtually, which is something we haven't really done a whole lot of, I have quite a few settings that I have to take time to change when the public comments in person or when they comment on Zoom. So I am just asking for some grace because I have it all mapped out, but I'll do my best. And so the process will be, after I'm done speaking, Mr. Bransoy and Ryan Hoffman will give the presentation, and then we will open up for the public speaking. And because, like I said, we have all these settings, we're going to hear from three people in person first, and then I will convert over and we'll do three people on Zoom, which we will be able to see on our screen, and tell everyone who has signed up to speak has a chance to do so. Again, I'm asking for your patience and understanding because this is a new process, and I hope and pray that it goes smoothly for all. Thank you.
Elementary school, public hearing, and next steps. So that's the general outline for the evening. Starting out with the lesson in history. I started in July of 2018 as an interim superintendent. When I introduced for this position, I heard many positive things about the district pertaining to students, staff, and communities, and at the same time realizing there were financial conditions as well as facility needs. Realizing the positives, I was excited to come to board. The success I saw with student performances in academics, athletics, and the arts is unbelievable. Something that anybody associated with the Old School District should be very proud of. In preparing for that first year, the district was definitely spending, and has been for, out of the previous six years. I know we could not consider this down the road. In November, when we were reviewing the audit, I arranged to have Michael Eisen, Jared Financial, provide the necessary information for the financial planning of the district. In putting this together, facility and maintenance needs were significant and needed to be addressed. In putting this together, facility, or again, was significant, was needed to be addressed. Moving forward into January of 2019, the board contracted with ICS to provide facilities and educational assessments of the district's buildings. In April, ICS facilitated a steering committee of 50-plus members consisting of parents, residents, and staff. Five meetings were held to focus on long-range planning, consisting for the future. In July of 2019, guided by recommendations of the steering committee, the school board approved a resolution approved of going to a single-building solution. This fall, to address the district's general fund deficit, that fall, to address the district's general fund deficit, the school board approved a resolution which was approved by the residents of the district for operating excess living. Looking at the facilities. The Bird Island Elementary Building was served its purpose over the last 100 years. Now we need a plan. I understand that this hits home for many. It's not an easy thing. You entrusted us as district leaders to make the difficult choice, and it's not the one we want to make. It's one we have to make. There are six things that we know right now. The Bird Island Elementary opened its doors in 1917 and needs approximately $17.2 million in updates to infrastructure alone, which would not address any educational improvements. The district's annual maintenance budget cannot address chronic issues such as mold contamination and deterioration of the windows, walls, and roofs. Repairs to the Bird Island Facility would be more than 75% of the cost of building new. Experts have shown that it's simply no longer as healthy, safe, and viable space for education in this current state. If we close the building for education, it opens up a new range of possibilities for the building and the site in Bird Island. The board is operating two buildings is much more expensive than operating one, including maintenance, repairs, staffing, transportation, and other issues. We have studied our enrollment projections, and our district is similar to the many rural districts in that we can operate efficiently within one building. We have seen from the successful start of the school year that it works to have all students under one roof. Even in the time of social distancing, our staff and students have adjusted well to the transition to one campus. They've worked hard to make this be good for students. Responsibility of administration and school staff. The last item on that slide. It's responsible to the school board to move forward with the permanent closure of the Bird Island Elementary Building. The board, the Bold School Board, represents our entire district. School board members are accountable for the care, management, and fiscal oversight of our district's assets and advocate for the best solutions for our students and staff. Tonight, the process of public hearings. It's a chance for the public to give testimony in support or opposition to the closure of the building. School board members will listen only. Decisions will be made at the next school board meeting, October 26. The decision on what happens to the building happens after the determination of closure. Tonight's meeting, as I mentioned, is for members to listen. If you have questions, reach out to the district office or contact one of the members, what members that are sitting here listening tonight. So now with issues facing both elementary schools and Bird Island Elementary School, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan Hoffman, who is a consultant with, that we've been working with since January 2019, pertaining to our facilities and our financial holdup of the district. So we welcome Ryan, and he'll share some of the things about the district, about the building.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, community board members, to present here tonight. In this process, when the board's considering the long-term use of the Bird Island Elementary School and how it fits into the district's long-term plans or the community's long-term plans, a process like this is derived from issues that the district is facing that makes it viable to consider not having the building in its inventory any longer. The list you see here is always included on the public hearing list and the public modification list. It is not to mean that this is the only four items that the district is considering, in looking at that building. These are just the major four that present themselves most upfront. So we've got district excess building capacity and space. We have noncompliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. I'll term that ADA from here forward. The repair and replacement costs are substantial for that building, and the operational costs continue to exceed school funding or school revenue as another reason. Hitting the excess space first. What I have included here is the chart from the Minnesota Department of Education Guidelines to Build or Construct a New School. What I have highlighted there in red is if your student enrollment is between 500 and 999 students. A high school, you can see there, is between 190 to 220 square feet per student. And then it goes down, obviously, as you go grade levels as well there. I have some notes there in the bottom just for verification or for understanding. The Bird Island Elementary School is 98,800 square feet. The Olivia Building that we're in here is approximately 150,000 square feet, which does include the pool area. Sometimes that's not included in calculations because it's not necessarily an educational space, but it is included in that total for about 248,000 square feet for the district. The math there, if we were to use the high school square foot per student at about 650 students, which were just under a little bit here at that bowl this year, at 220 feet per, square feet per student would equate to about 143,000 square foot building. Currently have 248,000 square feet. The MDE guidelines say the building should be around 143. So there's quite a disparity there between what the Department of Education say a new building should be built towards to what we're actually utilizing here today. Besides excess space, square footage, also excess capacity. And there is a little bit of difference there. This is how many people can be in the building versus how big the building actually is. There are a number of ways to calculate capacity. I'm not going to go over all of them. I'll use one here for simplicity. And this is going to be actually probably close to the the best one to calculate as far as limiting or showing that there's more students in the building than less. Bird Island Elementary School has 31 teaching stations, and we classify that as a typical classroom, 31 classrooms. This doesn't include small little, you know, teaching areas or special education rooms or anything like that. It's just a typical standard classroom. On an average of 22 students per classroom. Some classes actually have less, some classes have more, but on average, 22 students per classroom. That gives a capacity of that building of 614 students. Just a simple math calculation, right? It doesn't have to do with how big the building is or anything like that. It's just typical classrooms versus an average amount of students gives you a capacity of 614 students. Olivia Junior High, Junior/Senior High at 75% utilization. And what that 75% utilization means is that 75% of the classrooms are being used at any given time. In a high school, it's different than an elementary school. High schools have students that move between classrooms. So they go from social studies to math to English to music to art, where elementary school, 90% utilization means the kids pretty much stay in the classroom typically all day long, unless they go to gym or art, something like that. So the utilization of a classroom in elementary school is much higher because they're typically in that classroom as opposed to high school where they move more. So you lose some efficiency with your building because rooms do sit empty during the day, which is typical. That's not to say that Bold is doing that different or anything like that. That is how typical capacities and classrooms are calculated by the Department of Education. Here in this building, we have 39 of those teaching stations. Again, just standard classrooms, 39. When you get to the upper grades, you typically have higher students per class, actual physical classrooms. I'm not talking about class like class of 2020. I'm talking about inside of a classroom, 26 students. That gives you a simple capacity of this building of 760 students. Total those two buildings together, approximate capacity of 1374 students. Your current enrollment, I think maybe as of today, is right around 620, 623. So again, goes hand in hand with the excess space, too much square footage. Also, here, capacity of the buildings, we have a lot of capacity, which was, you know, thankfully utilized this fall to bring all the students over to this building to show that they actually do fit or can fit. Of course, we have some issues that we're dealing with with power, teaching, and hybrid learning, and distance learning, and all those good things with COVID. But the math, the simple ways of math show that the building has plenty of space for the students. And again, I have a note on there that capacity can be calculated numerous ways. When I talk about a current typical classroom or what I have noted here as a teaching station, the capacity from a building code standpoint, you could probably get between 40 and 50 people in that room for capacity building both sides. We don't do that. We don't put 40 to 50 students in a typical classroom. That'd be way too tight. We keep our class sizes down. That's the average then, talking about here, 26 students. So again, if we were to use that building code capacity, those numbers would be much higher to show that there is way more capacity in the building than actual needs. Noncompliance with Americans with Disabilities Act. Have a couple photos here, just a quick kind of synopsis of some of the issues there. You can see the first picture is of an entryway that has stairs down. There's no wheelchair access at that particular entry. There is ADA access to Bird Island, but there are multiple entrances such as this that do not meet that requirement. So that means somebody in a wheelchair would have to circle the building to find the access that is provided for ADA. Second picture is just a picture of doorways, and the detail I'm trying to show there is the knobs. Knobs do not meet ADA requirements today. You have to have levers, right? So just to show some of the severity of ADA is pretty simple. Changing a knob to a lever, pretty simple task. Taking that entryway and making it ADA accessible for a wheelchair, much different task. The restroom there just shows that it's not big enough, doesn't have the bars for ADA accessibility. And the last one is, some people may not even know this, but those drinking fountains don't meet ADA anymore. That one doesn't meet. I don't think we have one in here that does. You now see them are kind of angled. They allow a wheelchair to roll up underneath them. New style drinking fountains are what's required. And why do I talk about this? Have a couple statutes there listed. When you build a new building today, you're required to meet these ADA requirements, right? So you don't get the option to not do the levers instead of knobs or the doorways that don't have wheelchair access or the bathrooms that don't have wheelchair availability to them. It's just part of what you have to do, okay? And then the access code section, 1112, talks about when you renovate a building, a certain percentage of that renovation, dollar-wise, has to be attributed to only fixing these types of problems. And that's up to 20%. So if you spend $10 million per renovation, that means $2 million go to ADA compliance. So that starts to add things up really quick when you start doing renovations. Repair and replacement costs are substantial. As Dale mentioned, our firm did a facility assessment on both facilities. And just talking with Bird Island Elementary School or about Bird Island Elementary School, we've come up, and this again is, at this point, two years old. We're close to it. At about $17.2 million to repair or replace items that are broken or beyond their useful life. You can see, I just rounded these numbers here. Our actual assessment is on the district website, everybody to look at. And again, this 17.2 is for the Bird Island Building specifically, not including Olivia. This is repair and replacement costs. This does not include how to fix the building for ADA access or changing any sort of educational process that the district might want to teach differently than they do today. If you go to Bird Island Elementary School, similar to here a little bit, but you walk down the hallway, you have classrooms on both sides. We call it a double-loaded corridor. Just boom, 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 boom. You look at the new buildings that are built in the last decade or two, that's not really how they function any longer. There's different styles of teaching. We're not taking into consideration any of that. It's just fixing that building the exact way it is. Put it back to new, if you will, in the same configuration. I don't know. We've not studied it. We haven't gone through with the board. I'm assuming that that's not something that the board, in looking at curriculum, would actually want to do is end up with the same style of building because it's not how teachers are teaching these days. So we don't assume what that looks like. We just are saying very clearly just to fix the parts and pieces that are broken or beyond useful life, this is the budget to do so. To establish some of the reasons why that number is significant, Dale mentioned it earlier, again referring to the MDE Guide for Planning School Construction Project. It talks about when we're going through this process with a school district that any project that, or any renovation project that would exceed 60% of the new construction value of that school should seriously be considered whether it's a viable option for that district to move forward. It's not a hard fast rule to say you cannot do it, but it's pretty strongly worded to say, is there a real reason why you would put X amount of dollars over 60% of its value back into that building? And in this case, we're well beyond that 75%. Depends on how you want to calculate, even higher than that. And again, our facility assessment was completed about two years ago. The last item here, operational costs exceeding funding. And this is just a very simple graph to show what has happened over the last handful of years for total revenue versus total expenditures. You can see we've got two years in there that we were in the black. The rest of the years, we were in the red, including budgeting for next year, this year, 2021. So again, you can talk about how does that happen? How do we actually do that? The district has built up a substantial bank account. So they've been able to draw from that bank account to cover that red. So the district as a whole is in still good financial condition. They still have money in the bank, but continued on this path, operating the way they're operating, that bank account will soon run out. Just for reference, just the operational costs, and this is the day-to-day operations, not staff other than custodians, just what does it cost to have that building run? You can see the last three years, anywhere from $259,000 this past year to $320,000 last year. I would suspect a big part of the reason for this fiscal year 2020, the reason it's lower is because basically from April 1st to mid-March, the building was unoccupied and therefore some of the utilities weren't being required. The food service and things like that weren't happening there. So we gained some efficiencies. Might be a little different if we weren't in a COVID year. But you can see that the number's pretty substantial, just operating that building. This does not include maintenance costs for roofing or parking lots or major repairs like that. It does not include food service labor or supplies or teaching, teacher staff, or teacher salary, or grade from expenses. It doesn't include admin expenses, anything like that. It's literally just keeping that building functioning as an expense each year. So those are covering the four main items that the, we talked about at the beginning of the presentation. With that, I'll conclude my portion, and I'll turn it over to Jill to start the public hearing process.
Thank you.
Thank you. I understand all the public hearing portion of our meeting, and we're ready to go.
Thank you, Jill. My name is Ron Bailey. I'm from Olivia, and I'm here tonight to support the proposed closing of the Bird Island Elementary School. $17.2 million of infrastructure updates, not touching educational adequacies, duplication of costs for two buildings, declining enrollment, which created, which created... Duplication of costs for two buildings, declining enrollment, which created, which creates the excess space that we have to deal with. All those things make keeping the Bird Island Elementary School open cost prohibitive. I believe most people do understand the financial and safety reasons for the proposed closing. But one thing that may not be so obvious is losing a school is like losing a very close friend or a loved one. As a result, many folks are going through a grieving process such as denial, blame, anger, depression, fear, all those things. And it's necessary for the human spirit to grieve and all concerned must have the opportunity to express that loss. How we handle grief is different for everyone. And as a result, we do not reach the acceptance stage at the same time. Some may never reach the acceptance stage. But I do believe most people will eventually accept the reality that closing the Bird Island Elementary Schools isn't the best interest of our kids. While we need to show empathy to people, our school board and administration simply does not have the time to wait any longer to address the problems at the Bird Island Elementary School. Building and facility conditions are a big part of student achievement and teacher motivation, as well as safety for staff and students. I urge our school board and administration to stay on course with its goals and objectives to create the best facility and educational plan possible. Now is the time for steady and consistent leadership. Our kids' futures depend on it. Thank you.
My name is Nicole Baumgartner. I am a kindergarten teacher here, but I am going to address you as a parent. That's my first job and my best job is as a parent. I have two daughters. My daughter Caitlin just turned 19 today and I have, my Katrina is 15. From the time they started at Bold Elementary, they experienced some pretty bad health problems. They were on inhalers for asthma, constantly had different respiratory issues and steroids during the school year in and out of the doctor's office. During the summers, we're fine. At the time, the doctors can have attributed it to, well, maybe because they're exposed to more viruses and different sicknesses. However, both girls, when they came over here to seventh grade, suddenly no longer needed inhalers. Suddenly not a steroid since sixth grade. The doctors were kind of baffled until we found out about the mold issues, at which point the doctor said, that's exactly what it was. I just want to urge the board to think first and foremost about the health and safety of all of our kids and our staff. It wasn't fun for my daughters to go through that constantly coughing every single day. It wasn't fun for them at all. And sitting in the doctor's office and the medical bills was not a good thing. And I would hate to have any other family have to go through that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Beth Cadillac. My husband David and I have four children in the Bold District. One everywhere, one in the high school, one in the middle school, one in the elementary, and yes, one in preschool. We are landowners and business owners in this district. And I want to make sure I thank the board for the opportunity to be heard tonight. My husband and I have been active members of this school and community, whether it be through supporting PTO, early childhood committees, sporting activities, and all around improvements in our school. We have read the consultant's reports. We have listened to community members and we have toured our buildings. I'm here to express our support for the very difficult decision to close our elementary building. We acknowledge this is a tough decision, an emotional one, but it is the right one. It is the best fiscal decision for all the taxpayers in our district. Operating two buildings is no longer an option that we can maintain long term. Our best return on investment should be utilizing our limited resources towards advancing our educational goals, maintaining small class sizes, broadening our course offerings whenever possible, seeking to provide affordable extracurricular activities for our kids. We want to express our concerns as well about the health and the safety of the buildings that our kids and our staff deserve. A setting with proper air and water quality, one with proper heating and cooling systems, ones free from mold and chipping building that we know is filled with asbestos. My husband and I had an experience last year of actually working in our concession stand and noticing that the sign said, water should not be used to drink or cook in our own concession stand in Bird Island. Why? It didn't meet the minimum requirements for proper water quality. We would have to spend an exceptional amount of money, millions. What we should be doing is making sure that our kids can learn an environment where we put their health first. As a parent and as a healthcare provider, I urge us to acknowledge this. We don't want anyone to be ill from our facilities and it is a real concern. We also shouldn't just say that we have to meet the ADA. We should want to meet the ADA requirements. It is something we should want for all kids in a public institution. Finally, I want to comment truly on the optimism I share for our combined three communities. We have demonstrated a history of coming together for our kids. One that embraces the changes we need, putting technology in their hands, meeting the potential needs for actual hands-on training, examining what we can do differently to make our kids ready for the next century. And yet we can still hold on to those things that we did before and that we're good at. Personal connections, meeting the opportunities and the services of our community, serving one another. Things that we are uniquely suited for because we are a small community and we are a small school. We acknowledge these decisions are difficult and they are done with a heavy heart. But for those that disagree with me, might I offer this? We can agree that we have a shared support for our communities and our kids. And I hope that we can meet each other publicly in that regard. Our children are listening. They are watching. And finally, I want to urge the board to support each other and our communities during this difficult time. And I want to publicly thank you for what I know is a difficult position that you are currently in and continue to be in going forward. Thank you.
Neil, can you hear me now? Can you unmute yourself?
All right, how's that?
Awesome, thank you. All right. I'm sorry. We'll get this going yet. Okay, everybody can, everybody can hear Neil. Okay, your five minutes starts right now.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Neil Prokash from Bird Island. I am not supportive of closing the Bird Island campus of Bold. I believe that the only reason that Bold is being considered, the building's being considered to be closed is due to the neglect by the administration and a portion of the school board to properly maintain the building prior to and also from a rain event that occurred in October of 19. Had the roof been repaired properly, water dried up, fans brought in, dehumidifiers brought in, air changers turned on, we could have avoided the mold in the building. Had the necessary work been completed in a timely manner, students wouldn't have had been moved to Olivia. I've heard many of your type of things say that over and over. My message seems redundant, however, I use it to use to share awareness. I was on the school board from '07 to 2014. Prior to me exiting the board, we installed a new boiler system worth about $600,000 and we committed about $1,250,000, $250,000 to work for five years to repair the roofs. It doesn't seem logical to me that a building can deteriorate between then and now unless it's neglected. What's been allowed to happen at the Island campus is criminal. When I left the board, we had $4.5 million in the general fund. I believe, I understand, we have somewhere in the vicinity of 1.4. Where did the money go? It obviously wasn't spent on maintenance. I was a member of the handpicked steering committee who researched the facilities and the curriculum. One third of that committee were interested in exploring, working with our neighboring school districts. But right as, at this point, it has, we haven't had any verbiage to, to talk with them. A survey completed by the Bold Concerned Citizens Group showed some enlightening results. 58% of the respondents said no to building a pre-K-12 building collated with a wellness center. It's exactly what is being proposed for the bond referendum in February. 58% of the respondents said yes to having dialogue with BLHS before deciding on building a school at Bold. None, none of that information's been documented in the four minutes that I have been able to see. The Bold administration and the majority of the board have chosen not to take these survey results into consideration as it doesn't align with their agenda. They intend to use their scientific survey. It's my understanding, the decision to move forward with one building campus has already been made by the majority of the board. This public hearing is a formality. It's not that my thoughts or my words are going to try to change the board's mind. I'm just trying to raise awareness for the people that will be voting in February 2021 on a building bond referendum. We've been told Bird Island and Olivia campuses need $17 million each. It's $34 million. Some would say, why spend 34 million when you can spend 50 million? And the numbers are quite staggering. 34 million to repair over 25 years at 3% will cost 1.9 million. 50 million to build a new school over 25 years at 3% will cost 2.8 million. Nearly a million dollars difference. And as a community banker by trade, I'd say every million counts. The Olivia campus is now holding all the Bird Island students. And if it's working, and I'm not saying it is, why are we being told that we need to spend $17 million on that facility? I'm certainly not an expert in school renovation. However, I'm of the opinion that we could spare, spend far less money than the 34 or the 50 million. What if we could do it for 10 million? What if we could do it for 5 million? Forget about the wants, let's worry about the needs. A building, a $5 million bond for 25 years at 3% would cost $285,000, significantly different than the 1.9 or 2.8 million. Some say, if we build it, they will come. I absolutely do not agree with that. I believe students and parents want additional course choices. They are not worried about how the building looks. With decline in enrollment, it seems logical to me that we should try to work together with our neighbors, spreading the cost of the building bond out on a larger tax base, driving the cost to the taxpayer lower. I am not supportive of closing the Bird Island campus. Additionally, I will not be supporting the building bond referendum that would be voted on in February of 2021. And lastly, I'll close with, I found today, two or three people called me and said it was unfortunate that the hearing and the Bold homecoming coronation were scheduled for the same date and time. I suspect that there would have been more people here to address this issue. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Neil. All right. Let me get back to my people here. Next up is Linda Ram and I'm going to ask you to... Oh, shoot. Linda, where'd you go?
I'm going to try to mute.
All right, I have to mute you, Neil, and...
Thank you. There, I can do it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I somehow lost her here. I gotta get this under control. Linda, if you're on the meeting, can you, is this you, Linda? Just Linda? Can you restart your video? Thank you. Awesome. All right. Now... He'll get you pinned. I'm sorry about that. It's all my fault. And your five minutes starts right now.
Thank you. Our Bird Island campus started its demise in December of 18. Moisture was located on the third floor. Air quality was tested and two rooms were moved. January of 19, the hiring of ICS consulting was approved and assessments on both buildings completed mid-February. With the work session in March of 19, where a committee would be formed to review five options and come up with a master plan. April of 19, there is a need for roof repairs and a recommendation was made for fifth and sixth grade to be moved to Olivia, which administration would decide. May of 19, budget for fiscal year 20 included a roofing project. Why would this be in the budget and the current needs weren't addressed? July of 19, third floor issues have been resolved with no airborne fungal issues. But in September of 19, Mr. Brandzoi announced fifth and sixth grades had been moved to Olivia. October of 19, a recheck was done on the third floor for mold and found more due to condensation on the exterior walls. This was not mentioned until the March 2020 board meeting. Here we have a five-month gap with nothing mentioned on what was done to fix the problem. I would lean towards nothing was done or why would it have been mentioned? Why would it have not been mentioned in a meeting? April of 20, presentation of mold concerns ventilation and air quality. New business K through four movement to Olivia and temporarily closed Bird Island was approved by the board. If back in October of 19, something would have been done to remediate the mold, this discussion would not have been needed, right? Why was fifth and sixth grade movement an administrative decision and never approved by the board? But in June of 20, K through four movement was board approved. A 2019 decision was made by the board to pursue a new pre-K through 12 school. Our Bird Island campus was laid to the wayside. Maintenance no longer a thought. You figured out a way to move students to Olivia, which at that point, 17.8 million was the updated amount for Olivia as all students now enter that building on school days. Bird Island was 17.2 million and is temporarily closed. Except the gymnasium, never mind the air quality and ventilation from the mold because it's needed. Bird Island has had kitchen items, tables, lockers, desks, et cetera removed, but the public wasn't made aware of all of this till it was done and again, no board approval. but the public wasn't made aware of all of this till it was done, and again, no board approval. The Bird Island facility is not just a building, but a part of the community. It deserved so much more. Here we sit at the public hearing, knowing the majority of the board has already made up their minds. It is well-known, our communities don't feel informed, and board efforts to ask our school survey representative how to make sure our communities felt informed was approached. However, the Be Bold Step Up wasn't even up to date until a couple days ago. So your lack of effort was noticed. Remember our businesses, taxpayers, local farmers. Our entire community is still trying to survive a pandemic. Please stop to consider what closing the Bird Island school could do, with the next obvious step being the referendum. Lastly, if the result of this hearing is to close Bird Island, MDE says repair costs shouldn't be over sixty percent, and our buildings are currently at seventy percent. So it would be fiscally responsible to build new by MDE standards. New building is forty-nine point nine million. Bird Island building, we know, is no longer a part of that seventy percent, other than the demolition costs. Do the math, eighteen point two million compared to forty-nine point nine million is only thirty-six point five percent, which is well below the sixty percent. The Olivia building is over a hundred and fifty-three thousand square feet alone, which is bigger than the planned new building of a hundred and forty-seven thousand square feet for forty-nine point nine million. Repairing the Olivia building at a cost of seventeen point eight million is truly the best option financially. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. All right, we will move on to Mr. Gleisner. You can unmute yourself, that would be wonderful. Your five minutes starts right now.
Thank you for holding this public hearing and the opportunity to offer my thoughts regarding the closing of the Bird Island Elementary School. I know you as a board need to be sensitive to your constituents in the communities that are the Bold District. To begin with, I would like to visit, go back to the community survey which Neil cited briefly, sent out by the Bird Island EDA to gauge community sentiment regarding the current facility issues confronting the district. The EDA had no idea what people were thinking and honestly sought to find out. Let the chips fall where they may. The results were surprising. The survey went to each mailbox in Bird Island, Hector, Lake Village, and Olivia zip codes to try to capture as best possible those in the Bold School District boundaries. Results indicated, as Neil pointed out, that on the question, quote, "Do you agree with the Bold School Board's decision to build a new pre-K twelve school building co-located with a wellness, hospital wellness center in Olivia?" end quote, there were six hundred and sixty-four respondents. One hundred eighty or twenty-seven percent said yes. Three hundred and eighty-two or fifty-eight percent said no. And one hundred and two or fifteen percent were not sure. As has been publicized, the official Bold School Community Survey had somewhat different results, with forty-five percent of all respondents saying to replace both schools with a new pre-K twelve grade school and twenty-nine percent saying to continue to invest in the existing schools. However, as pointed out by Sue Peterson of School Perceptions, which conducted the survey, the best indicator of the results of an actual vote are the respondents who are non-parents and non-staff. There are the results shift, with thirty-eight percent saying to continue to invest in the existing schools and thirty-four percent saying to replace both schools with a new building. I point this out to ask the school board if they have thought about their plans going forward if the bond referendum proposed in February twenty twenty-one fails. I would note that the levy referendum, which it seems should have passed easily, given the financial strength that the school district is facing, passed by the slimmest of margins. But then today, there are households, businesses, and farmers who are being pressed financially also. Again, it would seem to indicate caution on the part of the school board to have some backup plan in place to keep the district moving forward. I would like to turn now to the most surprising result in the ADA survey, which Neil also noted. Question number four simply asked, quote, "Do you agree with the proposal to have a third dialogue with Hector Stewart BLHS School District regarding collaboration on curriculum and facilities before deciding on building a new school building, buildings within the old school district?" end quote. Of the respondents, three eighty, three hundred and eighty-three or fifty-eight percent said yes. One hundred seventy-seven or twenty-seven percent said no, and ninety-seven or fifteen percent were not sure. Of the yes votes, one hundred and five were from Bird Island and one hundred and five were from Olivia. Results suggest that there is a huge appetite across all communities that responded for a dialogue. What does this mean on the question of closing the Bird Island Elementary School? It would suggest using caution for the time being about closing a community school, at least until there is assurance that a bond referendum passes. It would suggest that the school board reframes, reframe some of its thinking and become sensitive to the needs of its district partner communities. Everyone can appreciate the benefits of a new school for the students, teachers, and the district. But each community is also working hard to maintain its economic sustainability and provide vibrant neighborhoods for those very students and teachers. At this point, closing the Bird Island Elementary School seems premature. Taking a closer look at working with one's current district partners would also provide a positive framework for any future dialogue with our neighboring district. Dialogue has significant community support. I would say, let's hold off on closing the Bird Island school.
Mr. Gleisner, your time is up, thank you very much. All right, I need to change over here.
Good evening, my name is Teresa Jacobs, and I'd like to address the issue of the discussion of wanting to close the Bird Island school. I want to do a comparison of the two schools, our school here in Olivia and the one in Bird Island. I have seven top reasons why Bird Island should stay open. One, the Bird Island school gym is a lot bigger than this gym room. And we need that school for athletics. Two, the concession stand area is larger and more updated than our school here. Three, the boys locker room and the girls locker rooms are bigger and they're in much better condition than the ones here at our school. Four, the choir room is a very nice choir room, it's quiet. Unlike the one in this campus, which is noisy, that was one of the reasons during the steering committee tour, it got brought up, how noisy it gets while the kids are doing choir after there's gym classes in here. So that was significant. Five, our lunchroom in Bird Island is bigger. It's in a separate room and it's not in the hallway, so it doesn't disrupt classes that are going on. Six, there are five sources of fiber running parallel with our school. Not two sources of fiber, not three, but five, and that's huge for technology. Seven, there are fourteen classrooms on ground level. Eight on the east wing, six on the west wing. If we bring back K through six, it'd be great for social distancing, because we'd have two classes for each grade. And like Mr. Branzoy brought up the other night on the work session, that thirty students in a classroom is too much, that fifteen would be great. So you could have fifteen students per class with all those grades, that'd be enough for them. And then for a pre-K room, there is a room east to the library on our main floor. And by taking off the top two floors of our oldest building, that would eliminate a lot of repairs of that old school significantly, which would probably bring that seventeen point two million, maybe reducing it, I'm guessing at eight. I'm not in numbers, I don't know that, but I'm just saying. So that would make Bird Island a very viable school. I listened to the work session last week via Zoom, and Ryan from ICS mentioned that the new school would pretty much be a standalone school at a hundred and forty-three thousand square feet, built out by the hospital, and it would have one gym with two workstations. Ryan mentioned too that the, it was, you're not to overbuild, because we'd be relying on the wellness center to build the gyms. That's all fine and dandy, but however, the wellness center isn't set in stone yet. The wellness center isn't for sure to be built, possibly for maybe five years after the school's been built. So my question is, why would the idea of closing Bird Island school even be on the table now, before the referendum is even voted on? I want to address really quickly the recent repairs that have been done at the school in Bird Island. We requested that it would be in the school's best interest, since you are using the gym over there, to fix the leakage that's in the boys locker room and with the downspouts on the west side of school. Well, I don't know if any of you looked at it, but right now there's foam. They put like expandable foam in the two-inch gap between the wall outside and the sidewalk, and it's very uneven, some of it's at the low level, and it's not even under the drain. And to fix the drain spout right now, one drain spout is fixed. And I'm hoping this is just temporary fixes, because the drain spout, if you go look at it, was repaired with a tin can. There was a tin can actually affixed to that drain spout on the outside. So I'm just asking, what does that show other school districts when they come to play sports at our school, guests and students, and even the taxpayers when they see repairs like that done? I would just like to point that out, because it's kind of been an ongoing issue. So lastly, going forward and adjusting this hearing meeting, I find it very frustrating for myself as when I go to school board meetings and you don't get to dialogue back and forth. I feel dialoguing builds camaraderie and community when we can actually ask you questions and you actually answer us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to actually say thank you to the school board for what you do for our community. I don't recall one of you platforming for this position on the fact that you would shut a school down. So I don't think any of you signed up for this unless maybe this is what you wanted to do. I know in my house, when we have discussions about a new vehicle, my wife and I are never in agreement. She always wants a new one and I want to repair what we have. And she always wins, she always gets a new one. But this, this is no different than what you guys are heading for. There's no way that everybody's going to agree on this. There's no way that you're going to make everybody comfortable. And at the end of the day, you have to do what you feel is right. And that's the task that we've asked you as a school board to do. And all seven of you signed up for this, for whatever reason, bless your hearts. Because as we know, it's not a high-paying job. I don't think any of you are paying your bills at home over a school board meeting. So we thank you for what you do. I don't think we envy you at all for having to make this decision. We know it's a tough one, and you might even lose some friends over this. And I know many of us do. I know when we, on the county level, when we went through the hospital thing, that was a tough call, there were some tough decisions being made there. But at the end of the day, you have to do what you think is right for the majority of the people, because there's no way that you're going to make it right for everybody. So coincidentally, I'm taking a leadership class right now. And I'm in week six, and it's talking about change. And I wish all of you guys were taking this class, because it's unbelievable that leaders, they're asked to make change. They're asked to do the things that nobody else wants to do. And it isn't easy. And again, trying to mitigate all those different strategies and trying to get through all those different things. I've been trying to preach at the golf course that if you don't know what the issues are here, then you've just chosen to not be informed. Because I think you've done a great job of letting people know where we stand. And again, it may not be perfect, it may not be what you want. There might have been neglect in the past, there might have been some stuff done that could have been done differently. But we're here today in twenty twenty. As we all know, running through the COVID bit, none of us like where we're at with COVID. Matter of fact, I wanted to speak just so I could take my mask off. And the fact that we don't like it, but change is inevitable, and I find myself wearing this stupid mask all over the place, because it's what's happening right now. So again, I'll just reiterate a thank you to you guys for signing up for this. I know some of you are up for reelection. And I'm sure that the decisions made here may reflect on that. But again, it's not an easy choice, and you have a tough task in front of you. And I'm, I'm here to tell you that no matter which way you decide on this, there's many of us that will support you one hundred percent, because you have stuck your necks out there and you've decided to do this. And I know that as a guy who's stuck in his neck out there a time or two, it's not easy. And you're going to take some arrows, and you're going to take the swords, and you're going to have to deal with that the best way you can. But good luck with this decision, and there will be many behind you whichever way you decide.
Hi, I'm Heidi Wolfle. I live in Bird Island, and my husband grew up here. He did not, been back here four years. But I just want to say that we are vested in this community, more so than we were in the last community that we lived in for twenty years. I was shocked last Monday night when I watched the Zoom work meeting, to find out that we basically are going to one school. It's already been decided. And I'm just wondering, why are we doing this meeting? Is it required by law that you hold this form? I'm assuming it is. And a couple of things, I go through the BoldStepUp.org site, and the questions and answers that are put out there, I don't really understand. Because the superintendent said he was temporarily moving A through four to Olivia. If that were the case and the truth, I would assume he is making the school in Bird Island usable for the future. I'm not thinking that was the truth, because if that were the case, I think he would be being it ready. One of the Be Bold questions was, is the district still moving forward to develop a facilities plan despite distance learning and COVID-nineteen? Answer on there, yes. Left unaddressed, chronic deficiencies of our buildings will continue to create health and safety problems. Increased maintenance costs undermine our educational goals. Well, it seems to me that we have already let that go. It's costing us more money. He's not addressing the problems there. Another question on the Be Bold, can't we wait a few more years? Answer there, the longer we wait, the more the needs of our school will grow. Instruction costs will increase every year. State currently funds in agricultural credit reduces the tax burden on non-homesided farmland by as much as seventy percent. The district pursues making major investments in its buildings... The district pursues making major investments in its buildings, that agricultural credit would pay for," this is underlined, "more than half of the cost of the new facility." I don't really understand that, because first of all, we can't guarantee that construction costs will increase, because according to last week's meeting, he said, "No, the costs are not going up." It might be for us, if we're building a deck for the school, Ryan said it would not be going up. Let's see. And you said as much as seventy percent? As much as? Is that the average reduction in the farmers' taxes to go for this? Is it different for every farmer? Or is seventy percent what farmers can expect? You say that district sues making major investment, if district sues making major investments in its buildings, that A credit would pay for more than half. So does that mean we have to make investments in our current buildings? Don't understand your answer. If you could break that down, I would appreciate that. A credit could pay for more than half the cost of the new facility. So who's being the credit? The school or the farmer? I don't understand that whole answer. Another question on the Bold site was, Matt Ram asked how much the interest alone on the bond would be per year for the first five years? And Bold said, "Once the board has officially approved the bond amount, the financial advisor can and will provide the full amortization schedule." Well, I feel that that's basically irresponsible of our district. You need to know, if it's your personal life, your business life, you don't make big investments without knowing upfront. So you're asking us to approve something and then find out what it's going to cost? I don't understand that. I think back to one of the first school board meetings I went to, it was voting on the old superintendent extending his contract. And Bowen had said at the time that progress has been made and it's going better, but trust is lost. Right now, that's how I feel with the school board, that can't trust their fiscal responsibility, that, you know, let's throw one point whatever million towards the parking lot, then...
All right, your time to start this now.
Joe, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. I will, just, yeah, just hold on a minute, let me make sure that I've got, that's probably why Heidi couldn't hear me. So Heidi, I apologize, we can have a conversation about this later. It was that, my bad technology, have to ask some grace here. But Matt, your five minutes starts right now.
Hi there. I just want to address these numbers a little bit. I think closing the school now is kind of shooting yourself in the foot. You take the seventeen point two million dollars out of the cost of repairs, drop it down to the seventeen point eight, and then add the four hundred for tearing down the Bird Island School on there. That drops us down to less than sixty percent that we need to just repair a school rather than rebuilding one, which is obviously what the school board is leaning towards right now. I mean, it's only going to be thirty-five percent to redo the Olivia School versus spending fifty million dollars on a new one that does not have an attached football field or any of that stuff. It would be remain at the old place. I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me why this is being sought out right now. It just doesn't make fiscal sense. As far as the Bold Campus, I think a lot of that's just poor decision-making. It's, you're not prioritizing. If the building is in this kind of disrepair, and the roof was in that bad a shape, it didn't happen overnight. I would think that would take precedence over putting in a new parking lot or cement balls out in front of the Bold Campus in Olivia there. I mean, it may not have been that expensive to do that stuff in Olivia, but it still costs money that could have been spent elsewhere. I don't know, I just think you guys should reconsider what you're doing and give it a lot of thought. The new facility don't make sense if you take Bird Island's repairs out of there. It just, we fall way below the sixty percent required then. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. All right. Moving on, we have Heidi Mack, is she on? She's here? Okay, I have you on Zoom, so can I hold you at the end so I can then just switch over? Okay, okay. Then we will move on to Mr. McDonald. And if you can unmute yourself, then you, as soon as you're, there you go, your five minutes starts now. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, everyone. I just want to start on, it seemed like there is a lot of discussion tonight about the new building, and my understanding is this public hearing is solely on closing the Bird Island Campus, and so that's where I will focus my remarks. I want to start on just saying that I support the closure. So the students that normally would have been populating the Bird Island Campus have already moved to the Olivia School, and as far as I'm aware, that seems to be working out well. So that campus is already vacant, knowing that there are millions of dollars that need to be spent to repair that campus, and with the similar repairs being needed to the Olivia Campus, it seems to be prudent to go ahead and close that facility so we can focus on a single campus, a single set of maintenance tasks, and provide for our students as best as we can. Going down to one campus, we'll help to, you know, like I said, simplify maintenance, reduce redundant equipment, streamline operations, and really, when it comes down to it, we need to focus on our students, and that is what we should all care about the most. So whether we have a brand-new facility some number of years down the road, or we remodel the Olivia Campus as it exists today, I think that would be in the best interest of our students. You know, I'm a transplant, like some other folks that I've mentioned, I've been in Olivia now for about seventeen years, so I have a little different viewpoint, maybe I don't have as much of an emotional attachment to, to the town or the facilities. You know, I've watched as Olivia has built a new jail, and we've built a new hospital, and for years I've been wondering when we were going to do something with our schools and be able to provide for our students and ensure that they have the brightest future that we can provide to them. So whatever amount of money that we end up spending in schools, whether that's remodeling, repairing our current facility, or building a new one, I think that is the best investment that we can make. Thank you.
All right, and last but not least on our list here is Mr. Frank. And I'm going to pin your video, and if you can unmute yourself as soon as you're unmuted, then we'll start the clock. There you are.
Dear school board members and community members, thank you for making this meeting available tonight. I just want to say three words that should stick in your minds: tax base erosion. It's been well documented by academics, I've done some research, that when a school is closed into community, at a minimum, and I repeat, a minimum, six percent of the tax base on a long-term basis will be eroded. That amount can go up to fifteen percent of a tax base. So in considering closure of the Bird Island Facility and that community and the tax base, consider the impact that will have not only on that community, but on the rest of the communities in the school district, and the tax impact that that will have in supporting current operating levies and future operating levies and future operating, or bond referendums. So I ask that you pencil those numbers out and put due consideration into this as you make this decision. I appreciate that you're willing to step up and be on the board and make these decisions, they're never easy, and thank you very much, that's what I need to say, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Frank. All right, now I'm going to switch back over to Mr. Ransoy, he's got some conclusion, or he's going to conclude our meeting, so I'm going to just switch that over quick, and we will be...
Are you on? I'm on. Hey, they only gave me five minutes after all this. I thank you. The board has got some tough decisions to make, and I think Ryan and his company has done an excellent job providing information that's on the website, all that data, and it's a lot. And so take a look at that, and offer your input to the board members. Don't hesitate to call them, and share your concerns. If you have questions, then reach out to those people. That's your, they're elected officials of the, of the district, and so they're the ones that has this task, and it's a big one. And I ask for you to respect each other. The world we're in today, it seems like it's opposites all the time, there's no coming together. We're talking kids now. What is best for our young youth? And I told him I wouldn't get on a sermon about public education, but I'm going to mention it anyway. To me, that's the strength of America. Don't let it go. If we're going to not support it, it's going to go like this. And right now, there's a study going on, the school board association's involved with it, the superintendents, the teachers' organization are looking at school finance. And I listened to an hour and a half Zoom last Thursday of Tom Melcher, which is the guru of school finance in the state of Minnesota. If you ever have a chance to listen to his, and right now it's on the school board website, you can go on and get his hour and a half presentation. He is, no matter who, what side you're on, when they want answers about school finance, that's the guy they go to, the legislature and anybody else that's involved with education. He's the person they go to. So please, support the board, share your concerns, it's not an easy decision to make. Like I said earlier, it hits home for many. It's not an easy thing, but you have entrusted the board members, the district leaders, to study it and put together the best decision for kids. So I'm going to end, if you've got anything else, Chair?
I just wanted to thank all the people that helped put this on, Neil Cofferberg, who has helped, you know, basically figure out the technology that I didn't execute flawlessly, but like I said, we have to have some grace with each other. I'll blame it on COVID, but that's not what it is. I just, anyway. And thank you to Danny and his crew for getting everything set up so well, Mr. Ransoy, Ryan, Joy, all of the people, I mean, just, it was, it was a group effort to get this done. Mr. Menton was our timekeeper extraordinaire and sound person, so I just thank you all very much for coming out both tonight and sharing, sharing your views, and we will, please tune in on the 26th for our school board meeting, and you'll find out some results. Thank you very much. Drive safe.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.